5893056, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Timer is used to manage the speaking time. Kate Poirier, our zoning Board Coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raised hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a Computer, or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your questions or comments. Please mute your microphone until called on to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits, only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those in special exceptions. Excuse me.
You're just going to take over as Vice Chair to give Ms. McKay a break here? Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State and New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, which we clearly have. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following four Board members in attendance. Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, the Chair, myself, Rob Shaw, the Vice Chair, Mr. J.P. Boucher, our clerk, Mr. Jack Carrier, and those are the full-time members that are in attendance. And our alternate members, we have Mr. Jay Mankara, Mr. Josh Neely, and Ms. Estafia Boras is attending via Zoom. In addition to the Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, the Deputy Planning Manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, the zoning coordinator. We'll start with taking a roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there was anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. Ms. McKay?
I'm present.
And I'm present, Rob Shaw, Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Carrier?
Present.
Ms. Mankara?
Present.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
And Ms. Boras?
Ms. Boras is present. I'm via Zoom due to my work schedule, and I am home alone.
All right, thank you. And so, also just want to note that alternates do participate in discussions, but they only vote when a full Board member is not available. In this case, since we don't have a full representation, we will alternate between the, on the cases, between the alternate members that are present here in the room, but all of the members will potentially ask questions and participate in discussion. And Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Shaw, the case for 75 Manchester Street has been postponed to the next meeting, which is July 25th, and will not be here tonight. You can go, it won't be here tonight.
It is planned for July 25th now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think that does that.
The only other thing we would like to suggest is that if you have a phone, a cellphone, please put it on mute, and if you're going to have a conversation, please take them outside. Voices carry, and we hear that up here. And in this meeting, since we are using an alternate, one of our regular members is not here, Mr. Josh Neely will be the voting member in this first case. And I'll read the case into the record. I'm probably going to kill this name, so I apologize. Upfront, Hendrico de Sousa and Lucy Viana Jorge Morais Marquis, owners, 6 Underhill Street, Sheet 13, Lot 73 and 303, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 20 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 19 feet of recently installed driveway width for a total width of 39 feet. This is in the RB zone, Ward 7. Is there somebody here to present this case? Kate, are they on Zoom?
There's no one here for 6 Underhill? Maybe we can just go on.
Go to the next case and come back to this one?
Okay, if they come? Okay. Then, no, that one is not. Oh, yeah, it is, okay. Mr. Mankara, you will be voting on this case. Mark Stephen Page and Michelle Lynn Gavri, owners, 25 Majestic Avenue, Sheet F, Lot 1446, requesting the following: special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an attached 20-by-32 foot accessory in-law dwelling unit on right side of existing house. And two, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to 12 feet into the 20-foot required right yards, right-side yard setback to construct attached accessory dwelling unit. This is in the R18-R9 zone in Ward 1. Is there somebody here to present this case? If you would please step up to the mic, sir, state your name and address for the record.
Mark Page, 25 Majestic Ave, Nashua.
The floor, sir, is yours.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking to build an in-law apartment onto the side of my house for my parents. They're up in their 80s now, and they're having issues with their current living on their own in their two-story house. The reason I'm building it on the right side with the setback is because we have a garage on the other side, and we went through a few ideas where we could put it where it would stay inside of the setback, and the only option really was to build it behind the garage. And I guess one of the rules for an in-law, they have to have an entrance to the apartment through the main house, and they wanted to have their own entrance. So, we didn't think it was a good idea to put it behind the garage, so the other option was to put it on the right-hand side. And we, the problem with the right-hand side is we've got an air conditioning unit and a gas meter. We're looking to move the gas meter, but the air conditioning unit is an issue. There's no real good place, other place we could put it. So, we have to, I don't know if you, did you guys get the floor plans?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have.
No, no, I don't think we got the floor.
We have this and this.
Thank you very much. They have four of them, so we can.
You guys can cheer. So, the in-law apartment has a five-foot space between the main house and the in-law to give room for the utilities, and there's a bulkhead on the back of the house, so there's no real good place to put the AC unit. So, the idea was to space it out five feet, which kicks it out even farther towards the property, the property setback issue. The, I don't see too much of a problem with it because our neighbor on that side, they have their house pushed over to the far side of their property for their driveway, and they don't have any windows on that side of the house. So, us being on that side, moving, you know, with the 20 feet, whatever it is, 20, 25 feet, isn't really encroaching too much on their personal space because it'll just be next to their driveway. So, that was the plan. We were also planning on doing a farmer's porch on the front because my parents asked for their own entrance, they didn't want to disturb us. So, we were planning on having two doors, one for them and one for us. They would still be entering through our house, but we would have a, like a mudroom for them, that they would go in, have their own entrance. They could also enter our house through that mudroom area, or their house through their mudroom area. So, we thought having a farmer's porch on the front would help mask the two doors from the street and try to make it not look so obvious. And that's about all I have to say. I can answer some questions.
Mr. Carrier?
I was just wondering, like, about the proposed two doors on the front. I mean, had you thought about, you know, having one door, because you probably, on the criteria that you signed, there's no new front doors, you know, permitted, and I was just wondering about the concept of just having the one door that either you or your folks could walk in and then, say, go to a mudroom and, you know, go from there?
Yeah, that was the original intent, the original idea, but they, you know, they kind of wanted to have their own door. If we have to, we can compromise and still go in through the main door, and then they could have a door to their, their entrance, to their apartment, through our front foyer area, if we have to do it that way.
Okay. And I guess the other question is on the AC unit. I mean, I'm not a refrigeration guy, but is it possible to move it? I mean, you know, the power and the refrigeration lines, is, could that be moved elsewhere to maybe potentially minimize the encroachment into the side?
Right. Yeah, the air handler for that is actually on the far end of the opposite side of the house, towards the garage, so the cooling lines are actually running through our basement to the AC unit. So, I, could the AC unit be even moved farther away on the opposite side of their apartment? Or, but then you have the issue with all the cooling lines being open to our atmosphere, or, you know, to the elements, I should say. The other option is moving the cooling down to the opposite end of the house, on the end of the garage, but then the cooling lines would be exposed to the elements as well, going through the unheated garage. So, I don't know if there's an option there. If there's an option, then we can do that. I don't, I just don't know of one. Besides that.
I was curious, like, what about, like, on the back of the house, on either side of the bulkhead door?
Well, the AC units are fairly noisy, and we've got a screened-in porch in the back of the house, and then we've got an entrance to the garage right there, so there's not a good spot to put the AC unit.
Okay, thanks.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Neely?
Currently, you have a fence on that side of the house. Is that fence completely coming down?
It was what?
Is the fence going to be completely removed?
No, only the front would be taken out for the, for the in-law, and then would be reattached to the side, so there'll still be a fence, and there'll be about five feet or so, five to eight feet, I think. Thank you.
Mr. Mankara?
Do you have windows on the ground floor of the main house, the existing house, on the side of the ADU?
No, there's no house, no windows on that. So, both houses, ours and our neighbors', both sides of those houses have no windows.
Do you have any, no questions? Mr. Shaw?
I just want to come back to the second front door issue, because my concern is you signed the affidavit, but part of that says that you can't have a second front door added as part of an ADU. And so, to me, there's a conflict in what you've said. You're basically saying you've met the criteria, but you proposed a plan that shows a second front door, which is clearly in violation of the Section 3. So, I think, I know I personally have an issue with the second front door because, because of this. And I guess I'm not likely to support this application with the second front door. And I think that was part of why the questioning was, came up earlier, and there might be some similar sentiment on the Board. But I am a little concerned that you presented a signed affidavit that said you were meeting this, but you've given us a plan that doesn't, so.
Well, yeah, when I originally did those plans, we were working with another builder, and they told us that they had come down to the Town Hall and talked to the inspector, and they said there wasn't a problem with having the two doors, as long as the second door was going through our house. So, I guess we were somewhat misled by the builder. After I filled all that, those forms out and submitted them, I got a call from Carter, and he went through it and said that, you know, you have a second door on here, and that's probably not going to fly because there are rules against that. So, like, I guess, all I can say is I was misled by our previous builder.
Okay, and then the other thing is, I think it kind of goes back to a little bit of, also, what was being asked earlier. So, it seems that if you could relocate the AC unit, and I mean, one thing that I'm looking at the plan is, why not bring that box directly up against the existing building box of the house? Move the AC unit maybe to the back of the new extension, then you wouldn't have, I think, the exterior issue you talked about. I'm assuming you're going to have some sort of.
Yeah, I guess it could go through the crawl space.
Right.
Well, they were, they were hoping to have a porch on the back of their unit, so the AC unit would be right on, right up, right up against their porch. I think the best option may be to move it down by, on the opposite end of the garage, and then just see what can be done for insulating the lines, the cooling lines.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mankara, did you have a question?
I guess I'm, I'm struggling to read the floor plan. Could you point out to me where the two front doors are? I can see one front door, and I see what I thought were windows, but maybe I'm not understanding. This is the main door.
Okay, that's a door.
Yeah, and this is going to be the second door.
Thank you.
There were, currently, there are two windows in that room.
Right, okay.
Take out one window and put the door in, so this would be their mudroom.
Okay, that makes sense. All the other doors were denoted with the swing, and that didn't have it, so I wasn't sure.
It's also viewable.
That's true, you're right.
Okay, and I'm getting texted, Estafia cannot hear. She couldn't hear you, Mr. Shaw, and she couldn't hear you, Mr. Mankara. So, whether that's a mic issue or.
Well, just from having been on the Zoom at the last meeting, I didn't speak up, but I did make the observation that if any member wasn't speaking into the microphone, and I don't want to out, but there was two folks here who weren't close, and it, and. But, so, it just, but, you know, we, so we need to be mindful to speak into it, just.
Okay, then we can say thank you to Ms. Boras for that. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, and Mr. Page, I too have an issue with that front door, and I think probably because the actual statute in the New Hampshire revised statute annotated says this, and that says no two front doors. I think aesthetically, that's, the builder may have been correct, or the building inspector saying, you know, it doesn't look awful, however, it violates the law. And so, that's the conundrum, sir.
Okay, is there a way we can compromise, and I can just remove the front door from the plans and just go forward with that?
I, Mr. Boucher?
Yeah, so, on the same note, and I think, the way I'm sitting right now, I'm not comfortable with this plan. I'm comfortable with the request for the ADU. That, to me, is not a problem, an issue. And again, similar to what we've suggested before, I would almost suggest, unless we can visualize this tonight, suggest maybe just a tabling to a later date so that the applicant can come back. The applicant can come back with a plan that maybe shows us something different. You know, because we talked about the encroachment also, bringing that building up to the, so.
Mr. Falk, in keeping with that, this has been advertised this way. Was the plan itself advertised, or was the request advertised?
Well, the published request was for the ADU and for variance to encroach into the side yard setback. It didn't have, our staff didn't put in the second door issue. When I talked to Mr. Page, it seemed like there was a good possibility of revising the plans, the interior plans, and the exterior, that that other door could be removed. And he wanted to kind of bring this to you, showing what he had worked on with his family and his contractor, and he thought perhaps, and our staff also thought that, you know, maybe if he does come to the Board and the Board is having an issue with that second door, which obviously it's against the ordinance, that he could just, you know, take a red X and just cross one of them out, or move one in the middle, however he wants to do it. I don't, it doesn't matter to our staff. If there's one front door there, whether it's the one on the left, the one on the right, or he takes both of those out and puts a door where that window is in the middle of the two doors, we don't really care, it still meets the ordinance, one way or the other. And he would just have to revise his plans internally to make it work.
I would just keep the two windows as they are now, and the front door as it is now, and you wouldn't even know.
Wouldn't even know. So, to us, there's no need to advertise this again, there's no need to table this. If he's saying that, you can put that as a stipulation to remove the door on the right and be done with it. There's no need to table this and have these folks wait another couple weeks. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with the ad. The ad is still accurate.
Okay, is, and Mr. Boucher, you brought that up, so is.
I'm all set now.
You're fine with that, okay, and the rest of the Board?
If we can do it that way, that's, that's fine, and then, so it's just the encroachment at this point.
Okay, Mr. Carrier?
Well, I, I was struggling with the encroachment because of the, what I think could be a possibility of moving the air conditioner, and there'd be substantially less encroachment. And I guess I, you know, think it might be more prudent to have a plan with, you know, the front door, whatever that is, and if there's a change in encroachment or not because of the movement of the air conditioner compressor, that's, that's like a different design, but I'd be, I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with the plan in front of us with a red X on the door, or said, you know, a note that says one door versus the design of what it's going to be and what it's going to look like and what that, you know, I think there could be a lot less side yard encroachment with the movement of that, and that, to me, takes a little bit of thought, you know, that doesn't happen here at a meeting, so I'd be more inclined to table to two weeks, but that's just me.
Mr. Mankara?
I agree with Mr. Carrier, but I would also just add that if there is an intent to add a back porch that, or deck, that back porch or deck may well also need relief from the setback, and so it would just make sense to add that to the plan now, so that we know what we're looking at.
Good catch. Mr. Shaw?
Well, their bedroom is in the, going to be in the back of that ADU, and right now, there was just plans to have a slider and some steps, so the porch would be down the road, but if the AC unit was right there by, next to a slider, it'd be really noisy for the bedroom. I mean, there's no deck or porch shown on those plans as there is now, it's just, there is a slider, though. So, I wouldn't even put the AC unit over there anyways, I put it down. I like the idea of putting it down by the garage, just figuring a way to do it.
Mr. Shaw?
And I'm going to bring something else up, perhaps as a suggestion, it's a bit of the engineer in me trying to solve a problem, but especially if there's a sentiment either by the Board or willingness on your part, perhaps as well, to consider tabling for a couple weeks. One thing you might consider is that if you actually pulled the addition forward a little bit, you could potentially have a entrance door to that addition that was from basically the side at the end of the farmer's porch, and so it would no longer be.
Facing the street.
A front-facing door, and that would actually be allowed. So, it's, it's a subtlety, but it's a whole thing about the, kind of the aesthetics and removing what appears to be two front doors to make something look more like a duplex. By having a door that goes from the side, you ostensibly don't have much of that view from the, from the front, especially from half of the street at least. So, that just, again, I just wanted to put it out there. I realize that redoing plans and stuff is non-trivial, and I don't know if trade-offs like that would be something that would be of interest.
Yeah, we did, we did think about that idea, but we're going to have all the, all the utilities are right in the front corner of that house there, and if we pushed it forward, it wouldn't be balanced with the garage on the other side. Having it set back a few feet, it balances out with the garage, and it would look better, I think.
That's the thing, there's so many trade-offs, and I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions, comments? Mr. Page, how amendable are you to coming back within two weeks?
We haven't, we, there's probably not any, but we didn't, I don't think we asked for any other positive testimony or opposition.
Oh, okay.
Still in the public.
I just wanted to get input now, so we understood and we knew, because we started here, and we're already over here. We have a lot of questions, and if, and I know you want to do it right, and it's an admirable reason for what you're doing, we just want to help you stay within the law, and that's what we have to look at.
Okay.
So, this may or may not be something that you would have to come back on the 25th again, so I just want you to understand. We are going to ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions, comments, or concerns, because that's what we have to do. But I wanted you to think about that also.
Okay.
So, there's no further questions?
No, there is. So, if, this is how we're going to proceed. So, I guess we also need to know from the applicant as we deliberate, especially to Mr. Curry's point, is, are you amendable if we decide to limit the encroachment, which means that the assumption would be that you would move the air conditioner down to the other end, and which means we'd need five less feet, right, of encroachment? Are you amendable to that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that'll, that'll help us in our proceedings.
Right, that'll help us in our deliberations.
Just wanted to hear it from the applicant.
No, that's fine, you did the same thing on.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then, thank you. You may have a seat, and I'm going to ask my questions, and then we'll proceed from there, sir. Is there? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Kate, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, Kate, there's no one on Zoom, correct? Okay, fine, then. I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely.
I'm generally in favor of the application. I think they've done a relatively nice job putting this together. You can see where they are on the, in relation to their neighbor. You know, the neighbor is offset the other side of the, of the property, as they, as they noted, there's no windows over there. You know, I certainly want to hear what the other board members have to say about how we're gonna proceed with this. I agree, the second front door is, is not going to fly, and, and I would probably not vote in favor, just based on the front door, but it sounds like the applicant is willing to put a red X through it. So generally, I'm in favor of the application, with the exception of the front door.
And would you also consider tabling for two weeks to give the applicant the opportunity to present?
I certainly would.
Something more accurate.
You know, I think if the applicant, I am very cognizant of somebody's time. I'm in favor of getting everything done that we can get done as quickly as possible. However, it's definitely not gonna be clean, and I like things clean, black and white, so I certainly am in favor of the tabling, if necessary, if we can't come to agreement here, that everybody's comfortable with a red X going through the current plan.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boucher.
I support the, the ADU request. So the after David, as Mr. Shaw suggested, you know, was signed by the applicant, and I take that as, as the document that we look at. And I know that what the conversation was with after, with Mr. Falk. I am comfortable with two things. I'm comfortable with moving forward tonight, noting that the proposed door to the right, which is not the original front door, will not be there, and that the applicant did attest to the fact that it won't be there, and is following the after the guidelines. Also, for the encroachment, if the encroachment was what it was advertised at, I'd be okay with that. If we felt that we could move forward tonight with taking five feet off the encroachment, I would also support that, so I would support it in either way. So I'm in a position where I think that this is not, as much as drawings are great, and I do appreciate that, I think it's pretty clear what we would be approving tonight, if, on either way for the encroachment, whether it's seven feet or 12 feet.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in support of the ADU with just, with the disallowance of the front door. And I would very much like to see the variance go forward with the removal of the extra five feet, because I think that's possible. I don't really see a need to table, quite frankly. I think that we have more information drawing-wise, and elevation-wise, plots, et cetera, than we often have with, with applications that we move forward with, where somebody basically has drawn a box on a piece of paper and the property line, and we kind of don't have a lot else to go by sometimes. So I think there's more than enough, I think the applicant's done lots to try to trade things off, and it's pretty clear from some of our inquiries, you know, why some of the things have ended up where they have, and I think reasonable efforts have been tried to, been pursued. I think it's, it is a good situation that the way the neighbor's property that would be most affected is situated, that, you know, their living space is more away from here, so, but I do think, just as far as the benefit and seeing it relatively straightforward, and I think we heard testimony that was, that was agreeable to just not having that extra five feet, I think that I would like to see us, well, I would like to approve both with those two things noted, the reduction in the encroachment, and then the second front door.
Thank you. Mr. Mincara.
I'm comfortable going in, in, in that direction. My, my one concern is if the applicant were to discover that, for whatever reason, cost, some technical reasons, relocating that unit is not feasible or not realistic, then I would hate for that applicant to be in the, in the position of having to look to come back to this board because he can't move that five feet. So that, that gives me some reluctance to act on an application, I assume, that would reduce the requested encroachment by five feet, you know, for some concern that they are making that decision on the fly, and haven't had a chance to investigate, you know, the feasibility of it. If that's the way the majority goes, I'd support that, but I just have some concern with that. And if they were to come back, would we have an issue with this being substantially the same application? That, that's my only concern. Otherwise, I would agree, the ADU's compliant without the second front door.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Well, I, I'm okay with the ADU unit with, with one door, not two doors, and I'm okay proceeding this evening with a potential approval by stating, you know, that there'd be one door, not the added second door. In terms of the variance, my, you know, initial hesitation to say, let's get a, let's get the plan in front of us and move forward with it, thus a table, kind of was speaking to Mr. Mincara's concern, but I'm, I'm fine moving ahead tonight with seven feet instead of 12 feet. I, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable saying, ah, you know, what's expensive, right? Expensive is a thousand bucks, 10,000 bucks to move a unit? You know what I mean? We shouldn't be considering expense anyway. So I guess where I'm at is, I'm okay moving forward tonight with the ADU, with one door, and with five feet less of encroachment. I, I don't think I'd be okay moving forward with that same encroachment and just leaving it up to, you know, other means as to whether that gets, you know, enacted or not, and that's where I'm at on it.
Thank you. Ms. Boris.
I'm actually in favor of the ADU, the exception of the second door. I'm also in favor of tabling till the July 25th that we update all of the plans as, as he'd like.
Thank you. I think that in listening to everyone, Mr. Mincara's points are well taken. Mr. Courier, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Neely have all brought forth great points. If we go forward with a motion to approve, and we approve the ADU, because I think we're all in agreement, the ADU lets the door, because regardless of what our thoughts are on the door, the law says no, and that's where we go. But the encroachment, if we reduce the encroachment down to seven feet, and it doesn't work, that's going to be on the applicant. So we have asked the question of the applicant, we received a response from the applicant, and so the applicant would have to take ownership at this point. If that works, great, if it doesn't work, then gonna have to come back here. So if the board is willing to do that, based on, you know, the applicant's comments and acceptance, then I would entertain a motion. And do we look at the variance first, or the special exception? Special exception? Yeah. And, or does somebody want to offer a motion to table? I mean, I'm looking for a motion, those are our three options, or just my questions. Yes, Mr. Courier?
Well, I'd be willing to make a motion to proceed with the special exception and a variance for seven feet. And if you'd like, I'd make that motion.
Absolutely, we would welcome that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Mark Page and Michelle Guerrieri at 25 Majestic Ave. This motion I'm making is for the special exception for an ADU, which is listed in Code Section 19-15, Table 15-1, Number 3. And again, that's to allow an attached 20 by 32-foot accessory dwelling in-law unit on the right side of the existing house. The board finds that this accessory unit will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The board finds it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The board finds that the special regulations are fulfilled, but with the stipulation that there's only one front door, and that the plans we have shows two front doors, but per our discussion, there'd be the one front door and not two front doors, and with that one front door, the special regulations are fulfilled. And the board finds that this will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve, again with one front door.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mincara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mincara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mariel McKay, I also vote in favor.
And I'll continue on the same address, 25 Majestic Avenue, and this is for the area variance. What's, excuse me, what's before us tonight is a request to, well, the area variance is enlisted in Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. And the request before us in our plan tonight is to encroach up to 12 feet into the 20-foot required right yard, side yard setback. I'm making a motion to approve seven feet into the 20, up to seven feet into the 20-foot required right side yard setback, and, and that is per our discussion, and that with with moving the air conditioning unit, there can be five feet lopped off, so to speak, and, and the unit, the proposed accessory dwelling unit can be brought towards, to the house. So with that, I believe the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And again, those special conditions notably are that the garage is already existing on the left side of the house, and that it's reasonably feasible to add an accessory dwelling unit on the right side of the house, and with the curved property, it nips into the setback more in the back than the front, but with those, the board notes those special conditions in our discussion. So I believe that the seven-foot encroachment is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. Believe it's also not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice is served to the landowner to add this accessory dwelling unit seven feet into the 20 foot, 20-foot required right side yard setback.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mincara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mincara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mariel McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Page, congratulations, both your variance and your special exception have been granted with a little bit of editing, moving the door, one door, and we've lessened your encroachment by five feet. Any person has the ability or the option to appeal any decision made by this board. They have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any comments, questions, concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department, and they will help you. Other than that, congratulations, and thank you for your presentation, it was well done. And thank you for being so amenable and flexible. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if I'm gonna go to case one, or case three.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The applicant for the first case has arrived.
Okay, fine, then we will go back to the first case. And again, I will just state that I apologize if I crucify this name. And Drigo De Souza and Luciviana Jorge Marais Marqui, owners, 6 Underhill Street, Sheet 13, Lot 73 and 303, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 20 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 19 feet of recently installed driveway width for a total width of 39 feet. This is in the RB zone in Ward 7. And is there somebody here who wishes to present the application? Please step forward, sir, state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the mic. You can remove the mic if you need to.
That's okay. Hi, my name is Hendrico De Souza, and I live at 6 Underhill Street.
The floor, sir, is yours.
Oh, so actually, I bought this house in October 2021. It's my first house, and actually, one of the things that I really liked in the house was the, because I have a huge backyard, and it was a very nice driveway, it's a two-family home, and I have a three, a three-years-old daughter. And the guy living upstairs, he's a friend of mine, he also has a three-years-old daughter. And then, actually, we have three cars each, because we have two personal cars, but he has a company car, and I drive the company car also. And at the beginning, we were parking one car behind the other, but actually, one day, the other guy, he almost ran over his own daughter, so after that, we started. Because next to the driveway was the grass, it was good for nothing, so we would start parking the cars one next to the other. So I talked to my neighbors, and I asked them about the possibility of paving the area, and they said that, that didn't, they, they didn't know about anything, they, because I always, I always follow the rules, and actually, I quoted with three different companies, and I asked, they, actually, I was gonna pave all the way through the sidewalk, and the guy said, no, because the sidewalk belongs to the city, so then I respect that, but I asked about the width of the driveway, and then both companies, they didn't say anything, so that's why I actually, I paved, I asked them if we had to get a permit for that, and nobody said nothing, so I believed them. So that's why I did the driveway without the permit, or without asking anything about the rules, about the width or anything, so that's why I did that. So I just believed them, you know, they, they say it was a professional company, so many years in the market, so, okay, let's do it. So in the very day, they will start paving, and one of the guys from the city hall, they was, he was passing through, they saw it, and then all that happened, so that's why I'm here. So, yeah, actually, you know, because I'm not rich, you know, I spend a lot of money, so I, I actually don't want it to remove, because if I have to remove what I did, I have to spend more money than that money I don't have, so, that's it.
Mr. Mincara.
So about how much of the expanded driveway area is in the setback? I see it doesn't go all the way to the front, so about how much of it is in the setback?
It's a good question, because I didn't, you know, I was hoping to get home early and take the measurements, because actually, it makes like a curve, so the, the area with 39 is just at the. So the, the area with thirty-nine is just at the end, in all the whole thing, you know? Just at the beginning, like six feet, starts six feet, and then goes like a big curve, so.
Right.
Thank you.
I'd like, could I ask the same question to Mr. Falk? Do you know the answer to that?
I, well, I checked with DPW and, you know how there's a little grassy area between like where the sidewalk would be and the new driveway? Most all of that is city right-of-way, so the pavement starts pretty much right at his property line, so most all of that is, is in his yard, it's not in the right-of-way, so.
And what would, what's the setback, I mean, if?
Okay, he lives in a R B zone, so it's ten feet.
Okay, and, all right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, actually, just another one from Mr. Falk. So if we think that the new driveway starts about where his property line is in, in the R B zone, and just, just for discussion's sake, if, if that driveway's new pavement started ten feet further back, that could be done by right?
Yes, if it's past the front of setback, he can go wider than twenty-four feet.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess I might have a question for the applicant.
Can I say?
Yeah, so how, so, you know, there's the new asphalt, which, and from the point that that starts, how far back does that go? I mean, is it twenty feet, fifteen feet, you know, how?
You said the, the length?
Yeah, the length, yeah, how far back from where it starts?
Mr. Courier, just judging on the picture, probably goes back about, well, I can see a truck, and then there's a space, and there's a car, so it probably goes back maybe forty feet or so, forty-five feet.
Okay.
Because each car is about sixteen, seventeen feet long, give or take, there's a space between, so maybe forty-five plus feet. But all that, all that back there, he can, that's not the issue. It's just the first, the first part in the setback, that, you know, that's wider than twenty-four feet.
Yes.
Past, past ten feet from his property line, he can go wider, that's okay. So a lot of this is actually meeting the code. It's just the front little part of it.
Thank you for helping me out with that question.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Kate, none, thank you. We do have an email. It says, "Good afternoon, as I will be unable to attend the meeting tomorrow regarding my neighbors at six Underhill Street in the matter of their driveway extension, I wanted to reach out to you here. I live directly beside them, and this driveway extension is in no way impacting me or the neighborhood negatively. It has improved the look of the yard, as the cars are not parking partially on the grass or the dirt. The owners are fairly new to the property, and they have done nothing but improve the house and positively impact the neighborhood since they arrived. I lived next to drug addicts and drug dealers for over fifteen years in that house, and these owners have been wonderful. If we can cast votes, I vote to allow the driveway extension. Please contact me with any questions." This is Jessica LaCass, two Underhill Street, Nashua. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition with comments, questions, or concerns? Nobody is present. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak with any comments, questions, concerns? Nobody, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier.
A couple thoughts, I mean, I guess when I got the application, I thought, wow, that's, that's a lot. And when I went to look, I said, okay, there's some grass in front, that was kind of relieving. And I was certainly relieved to hear the abutter that has testimony that, you know, this applicant has been picking the place up and is favorable to it, because that abutter, it would certainly be the most impacted person. I also note that this is really two lots, in a way, or the size of two lots. And, and I, so I guess I'm feeling like some encroachment might, you know, be meritus on this property. I guess, I guess something I'm struggling with at the moment is, it's, we have no dimensions, and I'm, and, you know, if I look at this, like if it came to us first, I'd certainly, if we had this very application and it wasn't done, I'd be asking, well, what are the dimensions and how many cars can you get, you know? Because there can be some addition of pavement by right, and I'm, I'm not sure if that does a lot or a little for the applicant, I just don't know. And so I'm, I'm struggling with the idea of having an application without any numbers that might have some merit. And I'm certainly sensitive that it was done without a permit, but I try to, I am looking at this as if it was requesting to us initially, and I guess I'm, I'm not sure if, you know, the encroachment, as much as there, is needed. I guess I'm looking for help for other folks on that, I'm on the fence on this.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
When I did my, my drive-by, I was actually pleasantly surprised on how nicely they had their vehicles lined up at about a seventy-degree angle, and the first thought I had was that I, I am really excited with, with six, you know, potential six, seven cars in the driveway, that they've reduced a safety risk. If I know what it's like with two families shuffling all their cars in and out of the street, and they've found a creative way to do it. And then to hear from the applicant, the story about his upstairs neighbor and, and almost hitting his, his three-year-old daughter really brought that home. This, this applicant certainly did this with, with no malice. I actually think it doesn't look bad, because there is the, about six feet of grass there. He's not asking for an extra curb cut, this is an oversized lot. You know, the neighbors certainly are in favor of this whole thing. So, so for those reasons, primarily from a safety perspective, I am in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also generally favor the application. Again, I know that, so we're talking probably a ten, ten feet deep by nineteen feet wide space, that's really what we're talking about, as we were told that the driveway is right at the property line. So looking at the rest of the neighborhood, if you look directly across the street, this is nothing compared, well, you could compare it to, but the one across the street is complete access to the street for the whole width of the property practically. There's challenges on that property also, there's a challenge on that property. But I don't think that this is going to be anywhere out of character with the neighborhood or, you know, again, it's not gonna, to me, look like, like it's complete access, a whole width of the extra, you know, the extra lot. As Mr. Courier said, there is, you know, according to the City G I S, there's a, there's a separate lot there, whether it's buildable or not, that's not what we're here for, we're just looking at the driveway. So again, I, I look at the scope and the scale of the property, what, what the intent was. Obviously, I, from this testimony, I know that there was no malice, there was no, in this case here, because I think that if he had come, he would have found a way to either throw some more fill-in in the back and, and do what he needs to do to get back further, to put the amount of cars. But I think at this point, I think there is the harm to remove, asking to remove what's there now, I don't think brings any more justice to this case. So I'm gonna support the application as it stands.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support, I feel like pretty much any arguments that I have are, have already been made, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Mincara.
I also support the application, I think for all the reasons stated. And I also noted multiple driveways around this that clearly don't comply with the twenty-four-foot requirement. And I would also just add that the existing house, if not the house itself, certainly the front stairs encroach more into that front setback than the driveway extension.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm also in favor of the application, and for all the reasons already stated by my colleagues.
And I too am also in favor, Mariel McKay, of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? And Mr. Neely, you're the voting member. Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Hendrico De Souza and Lucy, Lucy Vania Marquez, owners at six Underhill Street, sheet thirteen, lot seventy-three and three oh three, requesting the variance from Land Use Code, section one ninety dash seventeen, section E one, to exceed maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, twenty feet existing, request to maintain an additional nineteen feet of recently installed driveway width for a total width of thirty-nine feet. This is in the R B zone, Ward seven. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. It was noted that there's multiple factors involved here. There is, this is a duplex, it's an oversized lot. There is some grassy area between the street and the actual flare-out of the driveway, although that appears to be mostly on the city property. It doesn't have the full appearance of just a super-wide driveway. The, there are safety concerns, there's multiple vehicles being parked on this property, and the wider driveway provides for that. Also, the applicant did have the unfortunate experience of believing that the professionals that, that did this work properly guided him in that there were no permits needed when obviously there was this variance that was required. I believe it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to approve this. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served, and therefore, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Neely, for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor of the motion.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the application.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mariel McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, that is four affirmative votes. Your variance request has been granted. As we've stated previously, any member of the public may appeal any decision made by this board. They have thirty days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. Again, thank you very much for your application. And at this point, I'm going to take a five-minute break. Requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, section one nine zero dash one six, cable one six dash three. One for minimum open space, ten percent required, ten point one percent existing, three point three percent proposed. Two to encroach three feet into the seven-foot required side yard setback, eastern, easternmost property line. And three, from Land Use Code, section one nine zero dash one six, E two A eleven, to encroach five feet into the seven-foot required side yard setback to construct a stairway going to the second floor. All requests to construct an attached eleven-by-twenty two-story addition to include two bedrooms. This is in the R C zone in Ward four. Is there someone here to present this application? Please step forward and state your name for the record and address.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Tejeda, in representation of Sally Rodriguez. She's the owner of thirty-four, thirty-six Palm Street. Where we question the variance for a proposed addition to a...
Did you state your address, excuse me, if I didn't hear?
Thirty-four, thirty-six Palm Street.
Thank you, we just need it for the record.
All right, no problem. So it's a proposed addition to make a two-bedroom, two-family house into three-bedroom each. And as you mentioned, the stairway to the second floor is because right now, the only entrance that the second floor has is like three feet wide, which is next to our, all the building, which is like two buildings, but in the same D, and it's only one entrance for that second floor. Like I mentioned, only like three, three and a half feet wide, like every time a tenant is moving out of there, all of their furniture has to be holed up to the deck on top of a van or some, something like that, you know? It's really not, not very comfortable getting up there. I would not imagine what it will be in case of an emergency, somebody has to come out of there in a crutch or something. So in the past, you know, we have a variance approved, and we're hoping for the same today. And very, very, very thankful with the City of Nashua, we've been in Nashua for about twelve years now. We own the convenience store in our same location. And the reason we're, we're trying to go three bedrooms, it's because we rent properties for about eight years now, and we see like a higher demand from people looking for three or four bedroom, more than one or two bedrooms.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Courier.
Just a couple of questions. So the structure, like if you're looking, if you're on Palm Street, like looking at your house, the structure on the right where you're asking for the staircase and the addition, is that structure currently a two-family?
Yes, it is a two-family right now.
And with your proposal, it still, it would remain a two-family or be a three-family?
Two-family, but instead of two-bedroom each, it'll be three-bedroom each with the addition.
So is the, is the two-family now, is it one family on the first floor and the other on the second floor?
That is correct.
And so the proposed addition, there'd be an additional bedroom on the first floor and an additional bedroom on the second floor?
That is correct.
And, and again, I think you were saying the existing staircase is, is inside the building and is very thin, and this proposed staircase would replace?
No, it, it will be in the opposite side. Like the only entrance right now for the second floor is in between the two buildings, but it's really, really narrow.
Okay.
So we will build another staircase in the other side of the property for the second floor.
Okay, and then on the corner property, so to speak, you know, the, the convenience store?
Yep.
Is that, is there a living, are there people living there, or is that just a convenience store?
No, there's people living there, there's four one-bedroom apartments, second and third floor.
On the second and third floor, there's four one-bedrooms, okay.
Yes.
All right, that answers my questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Neely.
So where you're adding the bedrooms, I guess you call it the back of the building?
Yes.
It's almost like, is that like a courtyard there? Like what is that square area back in now, is it a yard?
It's, it's like a yard, yeah.
So it's grass, or is it just paved?
Yes, grass, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions?
Well, actually, similar to Mr. Neely's question, where the staircase is proposed, I guess, I know you can see it from the street, but I forget, it was a couple of weeks ago I went and looked at it. What is, what is there now where the staircase is proposed?
It's, it's concrete, but it's like towards the back of the house, the property, like the construction, like extends out a little bit. And then the staircase, it'll, it'll go like right, right, right on the same direction of the side of the property that stands out, like it's not gonna go farther to the property line, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like farther than whatever is constructed already, that's what I'm trying to say, if I'm explaining myself right. already. That's what I'm trying to say, if I'm explaining myself right.
Okay.
It's kind of a weird shape, the, the way the house is.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I see no further questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody here, so I assume there's nobody here who's going to speak in favor of the application. Kate, is there anyone on Zoom?
Oh, wait, I think she was to hand up.
I'm sorry, I just want to say something.
Come up to the microphone.
You need to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sally Rodriguez. I'm the owner. Good evening. I just want to clarify something.
And your address, please.
3436 Palm Street. Just want to clarify something that you asked. On the building above the store, there are apartments there, but they use a Central Street entrance. They don't...
Oh, yeah, they don't have to do anything with those two entrances that we have right now, yeah.
Yes.
So, there's not like anybody...
Good point, yeah.
There's no people
Yeah.
Going through that.
So, yeah, whoever goes upstairs to the store comes on an entrance on Central Street. This is all going to be on Palm Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Boucher?
Your current tenants at, at the proposed property, you want to add the bedroom, the current tenants there, do you find that they are using that courtyard at all, or is it just wasted space at this point?
It's, to begin with, there's no tenants there right now. It's completely unoccupied the property, because we're doing the whole thing, you know, brand new. And they pretty much never use that, that backyard at all.
Okay, so the previous tenants?
No, they didn't.
Since you owned the property, didn't use that area?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No, no more questions, okay. Then, well, there's nobody here now. Kate, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay, so there's nobody on Zoom to either speak in favor, opposition with comments, questions, or concerns. There's nobody present here in the audience to speak with, in opposition or in favor with questions, comments, and concerns. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And you're welcome to have a seat at this point.
Thank you.
This is where the board will do its deliberation. Mr. Boucher?
Normally, I would have some concerns, but I, again, we're talking the downtown area. My only concern was the, the open space. And certainly, there could be somebody that would move in, that we could say that would use the property or use that open space. But again, you know, there's, there's been improvements being done in the downtown area. I think, you know, what they're trying to attract is for people to move around. There are some parks nearby. So, I guess I am not so concerned in this location with the, with the encroachment of the open space, you know, open space going down, it sounds like a lot. But again, if you look at the buildings and some of the nearby lots, I mean, this is very, it's, it is clustered together like this, and I guess it's almost, I would say, would be typical of, of the area. I don't have an issue with the, with the ask for the stairway to the second floor. I, again, the, the addition to add a bedroom, again, it's not adding a unit, so, so I'm good with that. We don't have any parking regulations for that area, that area. So, again, those concerns I don't have. So, I'm open to hear what others have to say. That was, the only concern I had was that, was the open space, because of the open space. But, but I, again, can see that this area and the living is different than, than in another zone.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm fine with the stairwell. I think that, stairway, I think that's very straightforward, and it sounds like it's probably a good resolution of what seems to be a safety issue. So, no, no concerns there. I'm struggling with the other requests, and I appreciate the intent and that the market is perhaps looking for the three-bedroom units versus two-bedroom units. But I just don't know that I see justification that's really why the property has to become more non-conforming. So, I guess I want to see what colleagues have to say, but I'm struggling with those other items.
Mr. Mincara?
I, I do support the application. I realize that the resulting lot coverage would be, you know, you, you could use the word extreme. It's, you're obviously going to have a significant impact on, on the coverage. The encroachments themselves, both for the staircase and for the addition, are no greater than the encroachments, they are no greater or lesser than the existing encroachments of the building now. Where I find support is, one, I, I do see, you know, I do find the argument that the three-bedroom units are in more demand to be compelling, because they are. There are so many people looking for family-size rental housing in the city, so I think it helps meet that need. But also, the little outdoor area doesn't really appear to me to be particularly usable or quality space. I'm not an expert, but when I look at it, you're looking at an area of maybe 16 by 24, wall-to-wall. It's surrounded by two and three-story buildings. I can't imagine it gets much if any sunlight. So, it doesn't look to me to be particularly usable space. I would probably have more pause if the owners of 38 Central had objected, because it was going to block their, their windows, or they thought it was too close. But we've heard no objections from the neighbors. So, for those reasons, I find support, even though I recognize they are asking for a very significant deviation from the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
Well, I'll start off by saying that the staircase I find favorable for the arguments made, the safety of it, and it's, I think, reasonable to have a staircase there in that area. I don't think there's a lot of sacrifice where you're adding the benefit of a wider staircase. Like Mr. Shaw, I was struggling with the open area on the back. But I, you know, if, if that open area was on the front, to me, that would be a lot different, because it might be a yard you'd use, or it might be a parking spot. But it is boxed in, in the back there. And, and I do think it might, I, I could see where it just, the way this building has ended up now, it's, it's a spot that doesn't get a lot of use otherwise, because I, I, I am struggling with, you know, the open space on this lot. I, I do think it's extreme, but it's, it's a boxed-in area in the back. So, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm on the fence on that one as well. So, I'll leave it at that. I guess I'm kind of repeating what Mr. Shaw has already said, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I think I have the same thought process as the rest of the board. That doesn't look like a very welcoming area back there. And it might be nice on a, on a day like today when it's very warm, and, you know, you're in, you're okay in 90 degrees in the shade back there. But, you know, it really is a, a very small courtyard, and I think it is a reasonable sacrifice to give that up, to really add some housing that the city needs. So, I'm in favor for, for that reason. As far as the stairway goes, you know, when you look at this building, it's, it's kind of naturally cut out for that stairway. I know when I did a drive-by, they were already doing some construction, so there's already a bunch of stuff out there. So, you can, you know, I couldn't even see what's under it, it's just a bunch of construction material already sitting there. So, so the stairs will go over that. You know, we didn't hear from 38 Palm showing any opposition to that. So, I, so I'm in favor of this application as is.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in favor, for everything's already been stated by my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. And myself, Marielle McKay, I'm also in favor. I too see the need for the third bedroom. It allows a family with at least two children or three children, because they can double up in a room. The staircase, my concern was, without something that isn't so narrow, God forbid, what if there was a fire? Somebody needs to be able to get up and down quick. And so, there's a need for that, and that's safety. The open space, while this does take up a huge portion and leave a very minimal section, we heard testimony that it's not utilized. It's in the back, it's probably forgotten, and it makes more sense to utilize it rather than leave that little piece of nothing just sit there. And so, for those reasons, I support the application. And it's downtown, and people can walk, and there's new apartments going in, you know, across. It just seems like a good thing to do. Would somebody care? Oh, thank you, Mr. Courier.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Sally Rodriguez. The address is 34 and 36 Palm Street. And again, the request is for the following variances from Land Use Code 190-16, Table 16-3. The first request is minimum open space, 10% is required, 10.1% is existing, 3.3% is proposed. Request number two is to encroach three feet into the seven-foot required side yard setback, I would say the right side or easternmost property line. And the third request is from Land Use Code 190-16, Paragraph E2A11, which is to encroach five feet into the seven-foot required side yard setback to construct a stairway going to the second floor. And these requests are to construct and attach 11-by-22 story addition to the, to include two bedrooms. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And again, the special conditions that this board discussed is that on the easternmost side of the property or where the 11-by-20 two-story addition is proposed, there's already encroachment with the existing building. And the board also finds that this area is rather uniquely in the back of the property, that's likely unused open space currently. And the board also finds that another special condition is that the existing staircase is very thin, and the proposed staircase would be more reasonable, reasonable width. Given those special conditions, the board finds that this request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. The board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So, again, I make the motion to approve as the plan is presented this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw? And, I wish I could back and forth, but we started a little weird. Mr. Neely, I think at the beginning I said you would vote on this. That's okay, Mr. Mincara, we still have minutes.
So, is this case, is Mr. Boris, right, supposed to be voting on this case?
No, that's a different issue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, who's it going to be?
Mr. Neely.
Okay.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, your variances have been granted. Any person has the opportunity to appeal any decision made by this board, and they have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. Other than that, congratulations, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will move on to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. We have no motions for a rehearing. Did everyone have a chance to look at the agenda to see if there's any regional impact?
I don't see any.
Seeing one. I don't think anyone... Do you have it, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah. No, I didn't see any.
Okay.
A whereabouts on Amherst Street is 280?
I think this is Peters.
Peters.
Peters. Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't see any, oh, preto proco. Okay, I don't see any regional impact.
And Mr. Boucher, you don't either, correct?
No.
Okay, no regional impact. And then we have two sets of minutes.
I, I guess I had one question on page 21 of the June 13th minutes. In the discussion before the motion, it was about 12 feet. It says, Mr. Curry has said that he's okay with the conversation. I, I didn't go back and listen to the tapes, but there was discussion prior about 10 and 12 feet, and I believe I was saying I was okay with the 12 feet.
I think that's right.
I, I, perhaps the word "conversation" got put in there, I think by accident, but if Mr. Falk, say, that Mr. Courier said he's okay with 12 feet?
With the 12 feet?
Yeah. Instead of, with the conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other edits to the June 13th minutes? Seeing none. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Courier. A second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Mincara, you will be voting. Let's see. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Mincara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mincara votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. Minutes have been accepted. Then there's the minutes of June 27th. Did anyone see any edits that needed to be made?
I, I was probably going to abstain from this, because I wasn't at the meeting.
I wasn't at the meeting either.
And I wasn't at the meeting.
Yes, I think you guys should just vote. I mean, it's...
Okay.
You don't have to, you don't have to abstain. If you weren't here, that's generally seen as...
This is a really quick meeting.
Yes. Almost record-setting, potentially record-setting.
The one meeting I miss is the quickest one.
14 minutes.
I know. I'm like, wow. You couldn't have picked another day that we got married, Vernon? No. So, there are no edits.
I'll move to approve the June 27th.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Would somebody care to second that?
No, I'll second.
Mr. Boucher, Mr. Courier, which one?
Mr. Courier.
That was quick.
It should be Mr. Neely.
Mr. Neely, you will be voting on this set of minutes.
At least he was there.
Yeah. It's true, you were there. Okay, Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. So, the minutes have been accepted. Well, we're good. The next meeting is the 25th. I will not be here. I will be out of state on vacation.
I won't either.
Excuse me?
I will not be here either. I'm sorry, we're going to be in Europe for two weeks.
I don't think you should be sorry about it.
I don't think you should be sorry either.
Well, I won't be in attendance.
You know. Wait a minute, we want to jump in your luggage.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, sir. It is 8:07, and we are adjourned for the motion.